If you live anywhere in these, out here in these neighborhoods and you walk to school, there's not a path to get there currently. So by putting-
So this is Clark and this is part of Oakwood.
Correct. So if you were, if we put a sidewalk in here, essentially you allow for a means that you can walk for kids to get this way to the test schools.
And that works. This is, this is the area that scares the crap out of me because the road is narrow. There are no sidewalks on either side.
Well, some of these it looks like there is. So that's part of it. Well, so the problem is, we didn't want to, and we might have talked about it tonight, but I didn't think we wanted to. Because these are areas that it's not required. We never, they, they were built prior to them having a requirement for it. What do you do about all of these homes yet?
It can't go backwards.
I know, it's gonna be tough.
And I'm, I'm one of them.
Well, yours is the side thing, though. We need to talk about that, because maybe cul- maybe cul-de-sacs.
Yeah. But, but here's the deal. Why shouldn't it be my responsibility? I didn't, I didn't build it and I'm the third owner. You know what I'm saying?
No, I know. I know, I know, I don't know.
And so why should I be punished for it?
No, I know.
But-
We gotta find, I mean, the important thing is if you found something to prevent it from going colder. But this, this will solve a lot of them right here. Because there wasn't a means to even do anything.
Yeah. But tr- trust me, take a ride on sunset. Come off of Columbia, come off of Columbia, and then this whole intersection here, up at Columbia, it's like people don't realize it is as a stop. They just, they just, I, I, I can't tell you where it's at, but they, they just come around the corner, they don't really stop. This road is so narrow.
Isn't this the section that there's more house, like this is an old picture, obviously, but there's more houses there now. I don't know what the sidewalks are like.
But, but there's no sidewalks here, and the road is narrow, and it winds, and there's trees, and you cannot see people. And it scares me. And right over here is the, um, that, uh, Snow Group has those houses for senior-
The older gentleman, yeah. At least they're protected inside their own thing a little bit, but-
They, they're protected inside there, but if they decided to take a little bit of further walk-
No, I know.
That, that would be right here. Take a ride, just look at it.
I get it, I get it.
Amy, did you ask the, did you- Did you ask him about that tort immunity thing for that question we had that resident call in about? Just figured we'd ask. It's, it's kind of what I thought, but- Was it a business owner? I just thought it was a resident. Oh, okay. I didn't hear about the second one. It was only seventy-nine dollar, it was, it was only a seventy-nine dollar part, so it wasn't the cost. It was the, I don't want to set a precedence for us to pay for things if we're not supposed to. That was my concern. I don't know how much the, I don't know how much the business owner was for damage or anything. Nobody gets lunch? Nobody gets a lunch? It's getting pretty rough. I gotta talk to that guy right there. Separate issue. She wants to talk to you about another issue unrelated to the city of Oglesby.
We might not be there Thursday night. I might come up Friday morning. My son's got two soccer games Thursday night and Friday night. And I looked at what was on the schedule Thursday. There's only one I'm really interested in, but I might just, the first one I'm interested in is at noon. I forget what it was about. Um, but I don't know what's in the general session. The general session starts at nine, but I have no details yet of what it is. So I don't, I don't know. Yeah, we'll go up both dinners, and then we try to make the, try to make a, a date of it to go like after the, after the dinner's over. Like, we'll do Second City one of the nights, and I don't know, I don't know if things are open or closed right now in Chicago, but-
Yeah.
Because if you try to do it any other time, it's like an eight-hour deal to go up. But if you're already there-
I know, yeah.
Then we take advantage of it. That's the best part.
So I, do we have to make up and make a reservation?
No, she'll, she'll do the hotel reservations and stuff.
Okay, so do we have to pay for that upfront and they reimburse or what?
The hotel, from, from, so I've done both in, I've done both in school boards and I did it the first time here. Um, so the hotel, everything with the hotel was already taken care of. The only things I had to come out of pocket for was things that I call your meals and your parking. But then you could keep the receipts and you submit them later and get reimbursed for them.
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't know.
One tip, though, makes it easier, if you buy drinks or something like that, ask for that on a different receipt.
Right, you don't turn in all the-
So that way, so that way you don't have to worry about having to subdivide it out of the thing. You just submit the whole receipt and do that. That's the easiest way to do it. Um-
Yeah, I'm used to that.
Yeah. I don't think I even, I don't think I did the tolls. We could have, I didn't mess with tolls. I, I just did the parking, because that was, that was pricey, and then all the meals, so I would get it. Yeah. But all the hotel stuff was taken care of. Didn't have to do a credit card or anything.
I s- because I spent that money like I got a tree in the backyard right now.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll spend money on other stuff, though. I mean, well, tickets weren't, I cannot believe, Second City tickets were only like sixty bucks each. It was not bad. I thought those were gonna be crazy considering all the stuff going on, but-
See, we're going to Vegas the following day.
Okay.
For, so first through the fifth. Um, we're going, I'm driving, I'm driving Mount Marshall. Over in Lakeview, he doesn't have, but along the way halfway there is others late at night. Where they have that rooftop down there.
I don't know about that.
Um, so we're gonna probably see anyways.
You're not doing Yellowstone, you're not taking that far to North Carolina, are you?
No.
Yeah. Mount Marshall was cool, but to me Yellowstone was majestic.
Oh, well, yeah. But I, I just, it's one, it's just one of my bucket lists. And it's just a lot of things.
It's cute, it's cute. Make sure you get good binoculars. Bring good binoculars. It's, it's for, it's all the pictures you see.
It's, uh-
It's pretty far away.
Yeah.
So they have the little things there, you put a little foreground or a few or whatever.
Yeah, no, we have good stuff. I just, I never thought about bringing them. So that's what I had to say.
I never realized, because every time you see a postcard or a picture of it, I never realized how far away it is. It's pretty far.
Follow the city council meeting to order.
Augubright?
Here.
Collin, Curran?
Here.
Yaski?
Here.
Revara?
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion at second to approve the minutes from the August 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the August 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin, Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Public comments on agenda items only.
I'd like to comment on, uh, number thirteen tonight. And the first thing I want to ask, is he your grandson?
It's public comments.
Yeah.
Drew?
It's a public comment. Is he your grandson?
Yes.
Well, uh, doesn't that fall on, fall under nepotism? I mean, I've seen so many people, I've seen so mu- I have the floor. I've seen so many people hired in this town because of nepotism. Not because of what they can do, because of who they know. And when I read the, the agenda Friday night, I, I thought, you know, maybe, maybe this new, you know, mayor will go the other way. And you're not. You're not. I've seen people that have applied for policemen in Oglesby that were veterans, that were turned down. They fought in Afghanistan and in Iraq, and they were turned down because we had to give it to somebody's kid. Uh, Spring Valley, I believe, has a nepotism ordinance. Uh, there's a lot of cities in Illinois that have a nepotism ordinance. And I think it's way overdue for this city. Because, uh, I could go through the whole department and, uh, pretty much tell you who was hired on a nepotism hire, and not just the police department. You know, we also, we also have a guy that's in our electrical department that, uh, is the head of our department. That was done by the last mayor. And you're supposed to know something about being a lineman. Well, how does working at, uh, John Sales and Service, uh, give you any alignment experience? We're paying this guy that much money a year as a supervisor?
I don't believe that's part of the agenda.
He doesn't have any, he doesn't have any experience? Show me on paper where he was a lineman. Show me.
Drew, Drew, let's keep the comments on the agenda item.
Yeah, that is the agenda item. It's called nepotism, and let's stop it.
Thank you, Adam. And I'd like to address that if you don't mind. Um, the next person on the list was the officer that was the person that we have chosen to be the officer. He had scored the highest and was next online to be hired. Um, I know of no veterans, and I'm very proud of my veteran son, my veteran brother, my veteran father. Uh, I know of no veterans who have been turned away since I've been in this council. Uh, I, I don't know of any. I know that we have the application, uh, process. We have very few people that show out, and, uh, there's less and less people going into it. The person chosen tonight has his bachelor's degree, and, uh, and this is what his field of study was. I think he was very well prepared to step into this role as the officer in the city of Oglesby.
Chief?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, because I've watched the commission-
Hey! He's got this, he's got the, he's got the floor. He's asked to speak. Let him speak.
There's, there is a police commission. The police commission does the testing. The test results are available for review. The results are what the results are. The majority of points come from the lit exam. If we were doing nepotism, we had, we would have made him, whoever did it, the police commission, would have made him number one. Or maybe we would have made him number two. They certainly would have made him number three, because most police lists, number three doesn't have a good item. It just so happens that you've had a little bit of trouble. So there was nepotism, we would have got him placed at number one or number two, or he's number three. So, uh, his qualifications are just as much as anybody else that's on that list. There's nobody with experience on that list left that, that is recommended by anybody else to hire. So we, so that first number is based on a score, based on, based on the police commission's reputation, based on the score. So, yeah. Well, Chief, I've got one question to say.
That's for Drew. Drew! Drew, that's enough.
The commission is-
Another outburst like that, and I'll remove you.
The, the- No. Commission is not chosen by the chief. So.
I'll need a, I'll take a motion to approve the bills as presented for payment.
I will make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin, Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approve 1173-081621. An ordinance pertaining to the COVID virus fiscal re- recovery fund for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois. Basically, uh, what this ordinance does, uh, and it's mandated, the city of Oglesby is, um, in line to get about four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. In this recovery fund, there's some federal guidelines that we have to adhere to. And that is, basically, in the long and the short of it, is that no elected city official can profit by the funds that, that we're getting. Is that about close enough?
Very close, Tom. It, it, they require that you have a conflict of interest policy in place in order to be a recipient of these funds. Uh, this was a model ordinance that was created by the Illinois Municipal League, and they suggest that every municipality receiving the coronavirus funds, uh, adopt this ordinance so that it doesn't delay the receipt of those funds.
I would like to make a motion to approve 1173-081621. An ordinance pertaining to the coronavirus fiscal recovery fund for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin, Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approve 1174-081621. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Oglesby and Davin and Lorena Wyden.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 1174-081621. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement between the city of Oglesby and David and Laura Wyden.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin, Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Approve resolution R081621. Authorizing the mayor to execute a, a release indemnity of in-use agreement with JLN Holdings and LLC for the continued use of the salt storage facility placed on file of bulk water, or that should be gone. That's it.
Oh, that's what that was. Yeah, so this came up, uh, during the, uh, uh, summer Fun Fest. This is kind of tied in with the, uh, where, where we had the parking at, that they wanted basically, uh, to, to, to have like a, what is it? Indemnify? That's the word I'm looking for. Uh, so we did that one quickly during Fun Fest and not hold anything up. So we said this one was gonna be coming after. So all this one is basically, it allows us to keep our stor- uh, store our salt in the building, uh, for them. They're not charging us for anything. It just, uh, holds them harmless against any damage. Uh, any questions on that? I'll make a motion to approve resol- is it resolution?
Yes.
Resolution. Hmm. Resolution R081621. Authorizing the mayor to execute a release and indemnification agreement with JLN Holdings LLC for the continued use of the storage salt facility.
One second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Place on file the purchase of bulk water meters.
So the reason this was put here, we talked about this actually a while ago. Um, matter of fact, I think I asked a while ago if we could get a, a, a deal if we bought a bulk purchase, and the answer I got was no. Maybe, uh, maybe Tommy's got a smoother talk.
I got a yes.
He got a yes. He did ask a little, a, a while later. One of the reasons I've been delaying on, on making this purchase is, there was a problem we originally had with, uh, the range of all the meters. The goal is, we're trying to make things more efficient with the meter readings and make it easier, because right now there's a lot of manpower that gets used. So these meters are gonna have, uh, more automated collections, be more accurate and stuff. Uh, we've already been replacing them in the city, but this will be the first bulk purchase. By getting this bulk purchase, they are gonna give them to us for about ten percent cheaper for, for five hundred. It's for five hundred and fifty meters. The first fifty's at regular price, the next five hundred's at ten percent discount. So this will get us through a little bit of time as we, uh, get our meters installed and get everything up to speed. Any questions on any of that?
It's just, they, they are really out of date, too, so we kind of need to change them.
There's, well, there's some that are really out of date. There's some, there's some that don't, the, the, the meter either doesn't work and they're on what's, some residents are on what's called, like, uh, what do they call that? An estimated one. Some have it to where they have to actually go to people's homes, whether they're into the, to look at the meter and stuff like that. So we want to fix, make sure we fix all the broken ones and then get through and, and start replacing the out-of-date ones as well. So. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to place on file a purchase of bulk water meters for a cost of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin? Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Uh, next one is the, uh, approved award for sealed bids for 2014 Ford Explorer from the Oglesby Police Department. The city received six bids. The high bidder was Troy Dale in the amount of forty-one hundred dollars.
Drew, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the old Oglesby police car.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin?
Aye.
Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
Full discussion on safe, safe route to school program.
So the safe route to school program, uh, it was kind of already, I think it was awarded when we first got into, uh, to office here. They didn't have it last year. I don't know if it was COVID related, or they don't ever do it every two years, but they just came out with, uh, about, I think it was about two weeks ago. And today is actually the first window of when the grant window opens up. It actually goes from August sixteenth all the way through September thirtieth. So we've already started some preliminary work, but the reason I had it on the agenda here is so we can discuss it, because we will have to do a resolution to, to commit some funds to it. So essentially, what is it? It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that if you get awarded for it, you can get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, it's a lot of different things. For the most part, people use it for sidewalk. But there's different, there's like crosswalk programs, there's different, uh, like crossing guards and, and things like that. For the most part, people use it for infrastructure. LaSalle used it, um, a couple of years ago. Um, so we looked at a lot of different stuff that we had. We did have a meeting with NCICG. Um, a couple of things that are different about it this year compared to the last one is they've added two new sections. One, to, to put in gaps where sidewalk, before it used to be just replace, repair or replace. Now they have it to where you can put in gaps where there is, you need new, new sidewalk completely. So this could be a lot of, uh, some of the problems, not all of the problems that we have with sidewalk, but we can get a good portion of them. Matter of fact, there's an estimated route we have that'd probably be about, um, probably about thirty-five hundred to four thousand feet worth that would connect some of our schools to allow people, uh, to go. So with that being said, if we do that, if we get two hundred and fifty thousand, you do have to put twenty percent of the project. So that means if we got three hundred thousand dollars worth of, uh, new sidewalk, it would cost us about fifty thousand. And that's why I wanted to have a discussion here before we go too much further, because we would have to commit fifty thousand to be able to get two hundred and fifty thousand.
And so three hundred's the max?
Two fifty's the max, but then you can-
Total's three hundred.
Correct. It'd be three hundred thousand, so we'd have to put fifty thousand of that together. So I just wanted to get that idea going before we, because I have to start meeting with the schools, because there's some surveys they have to put together with some of the parents and stuff to make sure that we can get the grant. Um, but then we would have to get a resolution together here, probably in the next meeting or so. Any concerns about that? Questions?
Nope.
Now, I ain't gonna lie to you, it's not gonna solve all of our sidewalk problems that we have in the city. But this would be a great, uh, stepping forward, especially for areas that never had any kind of rule or regulation that they had to put sidewalks in. Um, and again, it makes it a little bit safer for some of our kids to, to get where they need to get. It's not gonna solve everything, but be a good start. Okay? I'll keep forward with the, uh, the grant, and as more information comes, I'll keep everybody available.
Introduction of Oglesby's newest police officer, Michael Revara, and the oath of office. It's already all business. Having done public comments.
I was just wondering when you guys are going to, uh, what are you gonna do with the parking lot over here? The, the little annex? The grass is there?
Where the, where the house was, we tore it down. Not gonna do anything right now.
How long do you think it'll be?
Well, I think we, we've got some other things that we need to do first. We need to get a, a building torn down. Um, we need to get some asbestos removed. And, uh, I believe I have an understanding what the, where the council is gonna go, uh, in that end of town. We need parking. That's a, that's a priority, um, you know, for the business that's downtown. Uh, but that'll be a council decision.
I was just kind of confused, I guess, as to why it was a necessity to have it torn down immediately without the, no big contract. Wasn't it torn down eighty-seven hundred dollars to Polaris?
Something like that.
What was the reasoning?
Well, it's, the reason was to, to get the, to get it out of there, and then-
What was the rush?
Put use. You know, there's, what, what do you want? Expand the parking lot up here? Or do you want to expand the dad down there?
Contract without any necessity. We're, we're wasting money. I want to know why eighty-seven hundred dollars had to be paid to Polaris when there was really no necessity of sitting there now. From weeks, city's cutting. It was under the tax barriers. They were putting taxes on it. So why, why would you- So, why...why would you tear down a house? It was bringing in taxpayer funds.
Well, we've got some other proposals that people have brought...brought forward instead of expanding the parking lot.
Sure that's what it is.
Well, you know, that's a...that...we'll just...we'll just leave it. Uh, we...we had a...we had a, uh, a gentleman came in, uh, to, uh, maybe that's a place where we could, um, use it as, uh, incubators to, uh, to start new businesses. I strongly believe that, uh, that's probably putting the cart ahead of the horse. We need to, uh, to get the, uh, the foot traffic up before we can do that.
But my questioning means why was the necessity to have it torn down with a no bid contract?
Well, part of the reasons is that, uh, it's in the...it's still in the TIF. I can use that money.
I'm confused as to...I don't know. I guess as a business owner, you don't spend money that you don't have. If you didn't have the money to do anything there, why did you purchase the house for $80,000?
I don't think that it's...the question is, have we made a decision on what to do with that piece of property?
But that's all three questions, I guess. Why was it bought? Why was there no bid contract? And what is going to happen with it?
We...we...we did it because we thought it'd improve the, uh, uh, the downtown area.
By taking away some taxes?
You could make an argument if you thought it was a...a good idea to do or not. But the reason we did it now is because to pay for the TIF. I believe that's in the TIF that expires at the end of this year, right?
Correct.
So, if we would have did it at another time, we would have had to pay from a different type of fund, like...like general fund or...or something like that. So, you could make an argument whether you think it's a good decision to do that or not, but the reason why...
I'm asking a question.
Well, to do it now is so we can pay it from that pot of money, because the pot of money will change into something different if we didn't do it this year. It's the same thing why we've been talking so much about press, and you're probably going to hear a lot in the next couple of months about Seneca Square. The reason that is, whether or not you...believe me, this town is very opinionated what they think is the best way to go about doing things. But if we are going to do something with it, if we don't do it this year, but...or at least have it earmarked by this year, then it'll have to come from a different set of funds. So, as far as the answer to the timing, that's the reason why.
Okay. Uh, I'm still confused, I guess, as to why the $87 could not have been bid up. We could have looked for someone and maybe made the pot a little more full.
I don't have an answer on that one.
I don't either.
Something...something had to be done like that weekend. Had to just put a stop. Had to be done right then. I don't understand why. You have until the end of the year. The house was dozing, I think, four days and gone. They're bringing in black fill, which really confused me as to why. Black fill would be brought in the summer where you probably need three inch rock and CA6 if you're actually going to build a parking lot there. I've only been in construction 25 years. I've...I've seen a parking lot made. That wasn't how you're making a parking lot.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
I have nothing.
I have, uh, two things. Um, so, we had some storm damage a little bit, uh, earlier, and the question was if we were going to go out and do chipping services, uh, through the city. We never really came up with, uh, the...what the rules would be to do that. We...we do it in the...the spring, in the fall, and we never really said how much damage it really constitutes for storm damage if we go out and do it again throughout the year. Uh, the thought process we kind of had is I go off of what the street superintendent is, and if there's enough damage on the city properties that we need to go and chip, which there was in this case. So, that's kind of the...going to be the baseline going forward of when we do that. So, uh, for anybody that's got any storm damage stuff out there and needs anything chipped, any limbs, Thursday and Friday, we think there might be enough time to get it all done in a single day, but Thursday and Friday will be the day this week to do that. Next big thing, uh, we obviously, everybody's probably aware, we had an outage on Sunday, the 8th, in the afternoon. A cable had burnt up in a cabinet, uh, that led to an underground circuit. When that burnt up, uh, electrical department responded quickly. They isolated that...that cabinet, and they tried to get everything back online. When they did that, it didn't energize properly, so they found out that there's more damage elsewhere. When you have damage in your overhead or something like that, like, for example, when we had somebody hit the pole, you can see the wires hanging there. When you have damage to something that's in underground, it's significantly harder to find and isolate, and that was part of the problem. Uh, granted, it did not make it easier. We...we try our best to make sure we communicate. I...I know when it's working hours and stuff, we have code reds going out. When it's on the weekends, we try to update via Facebook. I did try to do an update. Uh, unfortunately, when I...by the time I got the report and by the time the update went on on Facebook, I think the power had gone down again. I knew that upset quite a few residents to, uh, to read on Facebook that power's back up and running, and that wasn't the case. So, we updated that best we could. Um, it did take, uh, quite a bit of time to isolate and find the damage. There was more damage that was down underground that when the circuit burnt dump, it burnt up. It dropped some, uh, some, like, burnt up droppings and stuff like that, and it went to another circuit that was underneath the cabinet that they had to find and isolate. Um, so, the city was operating on...on two circuits that everything had combined, and unfortunately, that did cause back our flickering lights, the thing that we thought that we got done for the last 18...18 months to a year practically. So, I would like to thank Wire Mesh. Uh, we did make a call out to them. I think it was on Tuesday night. So, if you noticed that your flickering lights kind of went away after 8:00 PM. The reason for that was Wire Mesh was kind enough to...to, uh, to let go their second...their...their next shift at 8:00 PM, and they gave us a reprieve until the morning until we were able to...to get everything repaired again. So, everything should be on the same circuits again. Again, we apologize for how long it might have taken, but again, when you have damage that's to underground circuits, it takes a while to isolate that and then repair that. So, thank you for everybody's patience, and everything should be good now. That's all I got.
Colleen?
I just have one thing. Um, as most of you have probably heard on the radio, the Illinois Valley Community College has terminated the intergovernmental agreement regarding the use of Gondolphi Field for the men's baseball games and practices. We thank them for the partnership and the professionalism and communication they have displayed out through the years. We wish nothing but the best of luck as they move forward, and the baseball tournaments were a success. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I've got, uh, a couple of things. This is from Alzheimer's Support, and we'll post this on the, uh, on our website. My name is Maya, and I'm contacting you on behalf of the Alzheimer's Support. Uh, Alzheimer's Support is a free service that assists Oglesby families who have loved...loved ones with Alzheimer's, disease, or dementia. There are free search tech and database of Alzheimer's care facilities. Families in need of care for their loved ones can locate licensed care homes and communities in the Oglesby area that are best equipped to provide care for their loved ones. I was wondering would it be possible for you to let your residents know about Alzheimer's Support via your website, and we will do so. I've had...received a couple of complaints about poison ivy. Can't send the city workers on a plate on private property to...to kill the poison ivy. We'll notify them, try to work with them to, uh, to get that done. Uh, we're having a nightmare on...on, uh, some properties in a state of despair. Uh, it's a nightmare for us, and, uh, as we run through the legal system, it's, um...it gets to be a nightmare at times. Uh, the outage Sunday, uh, was a nightmare. It was like a, uh, um, worst that could happen. It seemed like one thing after another. Uh, it was just one of those...uh, it was a perfect storm. And I do thank the electric department for their hard work in, uh, in finding the, uh, the problems. I've got one other thing, and I'm going to address it here tonight with, uh, Mr. Merriman. I think my recollection of you and...and that picture is in...in, uh, in my mind. Happened several years ago when you were sitting out on that fountain with a blue pair of shorts, a white t-shirt and a cap, and, uh, you had on...you had a sign. It says, "Fire Tom Martin." Drew, you've been a school ground bully all your life, and therefore, I want you to understand that this type of conduct in these council chambers is not acceptable, nor will it be tolerated. I believe in free speech, but will not put up with the Merriman spin on what is not factual or truthful. An example is that the city was providing free electricity to the carnival. You promote yourself on an expert. You promote yourself, "I've got the floor." You promote yourself as an expert on every subject matter that you happen to bring to the floor. In reality, you're not an expert on anything, except being a bully. Your unfounded accusations and untrue comments are not acceptable. You made some comments here tonight. You bring and you substantiate those comments by the next meeting. That's all I have. I'll, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Collin?
John?
Curran?
Aye.
Yaski?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye.
But I'm going to tell the truth, Drew. That's more than you can do. I'm going to tell the truth and tell people what it is, not...not...not up here and produce lies like you do.